Good morning. It is Tuesday, October 8th, 2024. I'll call to the order, I'll call the order at the Story County Board of Supervisors meeting. Please stand if you are able to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt today's agenda?
So moved.
Second. They're moved and seconded. Merkin?
Aye.
Basil?
Aye.
Haddon's, aye. Now we'll move on. The time for public comment number one. This comment period is for the public to address topics on today's agenda. If anyone would like to make public comment, please come forward. If you're in the meeting room or if you're online, please raise your hand on Zoom. And seeing none, we'll close public comment number one and we'll move on. We've got bid opening for the McFarland shop replacement. Morning.
All right. Looks like we got two bids. Uh, the first is from Renomads, Story County Conservation.
It was from who? I'm sorry.
Renomads. R E N O M A D S. So we got it better here, don't we? So we do have bid bond for 5% of the gross bid amount to the county and done and signed. You want opening, so you want me to? My mic's gonna open. That big envelope. Both addendum are acknowledged. And I'll read two amounts. A base bid amount is nine hundred ninety-two thousand zero dollars and zero cents. Nine nine two zero 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 dot zero zero. And alternate number one, that amount is forty-nine thousand four hundred dollars and zero cents. Four nine four zero zero dot zero zero. Yeah, that looks like a nine. Yeah, four nine is four hundred. And the second bid is from HPC Construction out of Ames. That one. And yeah, the bid bond is present for 5% of the bid amount. They have acknowledged both addendum. And the bid amount is seven hundred sixty-five thousand and zero cents. Seven six five zero 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 dot zero zero. And the ident, uh, alternate, uh, number one. Alternate number one amount is fifty-seven thousand and zero dollars. So five seven zero 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 dot zero zero. And that is all of the bids. We will take these back and review uh, these, these bids and then come back or with a recommendation.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
Thank you. Moving on, we have consideration of proclamation recognizing October 14th as Indigenous Peoples' Day. Supervisor Merkin, would you start us off?
Whereas the holiday known as Columbus Day commemorates the Italian explorer Christopher Columbus and his voyages to the New World, the beginning of the colonization of Indigenous people that forever changed their identity, cultures, and achievements. And whereas numerous cities and state governments within, in the United States now recognize Columbus Day also as Indigenous Peoples' Day in an effort to create a path of healing and reconciliation. And whereas Story County recognizes that the Indigenous peoples of the land that would later become known as the Americas have occupied these lands since time immemorial. And whereas Story County recognizes and value and values the many contributions made through Indigenous peoples' knowledge, labor, technology, science, philosophy, arts, and the deep cultural contribution.
And whereas Story County has a responsibility to oppose the systemic racism towards Indigenous people in the United States, which perpetuates high rates of poverty and income equality, exasperating disproportionate health, education, and social crises. And whereas Story County promotes the closing of the equity gap for Indigenous peoples through policies and practices that reflect the experiences of Indigenous peoples, ensures greater access and opportunity, and honor our nation's Indigenous roots, history, and contributions.
And whereas Indigenous Peoples' Day was first proposed in 1977 by a delegation of Native nations of the United Nations, sponsored International Conference on Discrimination Against Indigenous Populations in the Americas. And whereas honoring the role of Columbus as a historical figure promotes values of intolerance and violence that are still common in today's world and opposed to the values of the citizens of Story County. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the Story County Board of Supervisors, do hereby proclaim October 14th, 2024 as Indigenous Peoples' Day, and we strongly support the proposition that Indigenous Peoples' Day shall be an opportunity to celebrate the thriving cultures and values of Indigenous peoples of our region. I move the proclamation.
Second.
They're moved and seconded. Basil?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Haddon's, aye. Adopted. Moving on, we consideration of the October 1st, 2024 minutes.
And move approval.
Second.
They're moved and seconded. Merkin?
Aye.
Basil?
Aye.
Haddon's, aye. Uh, consideration of claims.
I move approval of claims as presented.
Second.
They're moved and seconded. Basil?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Haddon's, aye. And now we're down to consent agenda. Anyone pulling anything from consent?
No.
No? If not, I'll take a motion.
I move approval of the items on consent agenda as submitted.
Second.
They're moved and seconded. Merkin?
Aye.
Basil?
Aye.
Haddon's, aye. Uh, now we move down. We've got a public hearing item. It's first consideration of ordinance 319, amending Chapter 85, general provisions and definitions in Chapter 90, conditional uses for the Story County Code of Ordinances, Land Development Regulations for a text amendment to allow truck, trailer, and RV garages as conditional uses in the A-1 zoning district. I believe Leanne is joining us via Zoom.
I am. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, good morning. Um, Bryce will be sharing the presentation here shortly. Thank you, Bryce. Well, I'll just go to next slide. Um, so this item before the Board of Supervisors is a text amendment submitted by Ian Freeman with Camper Commander. Uh, the proposed amendments are to draft supplemental standards for a conditional use through Chapter 90 of our ordinance to allow for truck, trailer, and RV garages. That was what was originally requested, and I will get to how that's been modified here shortly. This, um, action before you today is part of the follow-up steps related to code enforcement that's been ongoing on the property where the applicant's business is located. And this was one of the steps that we recommended to bring the property into conformance. Um, staff did recommend, um, that initially, um, after a amendment to the county C2C plan was not approved, um, the text amendment would help bring again the scent to conformance. Planning and Zoning Commission did act on this on October 2nd and add the semi to the beginning of the statement. Um, so I'm going to talk about those nature of the changes a little bit as we go. Can you go to the next slide, please? So again, initially as recommended, or as applied for by the applicant, um, this would allow truck, trailer, and RV garages as a conditional use in the A-1 district along with supplemental standards. Um, however, ordinance number 319 as drafted and was published for today's meeting incorporates the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission, and that is to add the word semi to the beginning and, um, so add semi throughout the supplemental standards as appropriate. Next slide, please. So first, I want to talk about the proposed revisions to Chapter 85. Um, that is our general, our, our general provisions and definitions section. So what you see in red font on this slide is that language that was proposed by the applicant. Um, that that you see red font with highlights is that, um, that has follow-up from the Planning and Zoning Commission that meeting and their recommendation. The, what you see in purple is was proposed by staff. So as you see on the slide, the applicant presented language, staff then modified it, and then the Planning and Zoning Commission further modified it. And the question was asked at the Planning and Zoning Commission of Mr. Freeman, whether or not he agreed with the modifications as proposed by staff. And, um, he did acknowledge that he did agree with that, and I know he's in the room too, and, and will comment through the public hearing portion. Can you go to the next one, please? Um, the next few slides break down then the supplemental standards for this proposed use as a conditional use permit. Um, I won't go through each slide and read it. We'll just quickly go through the sections, then if the board has any questions, um, feel free to stop me. But this section talks about abandonment and what would happen to the property once the use of a repair and service garage would cease, um, and how we would handle that, the next section. If you want, go to the next slide, please. Talks about the residential envelope. So we recognize that in some cases, this conditional use permit may not exist solely on a property. It may be in conjunction with the residential use. And so we want to make sure that that residential use had a, a boundary established, a residential envelope that would help provide a buffer between that and this repair and service garage. Next slide. Section C talks about the minimum area that would be needed. Um, and so we recommend the area confined to repair and service garage shall not exceed five acres. Um, and then distance requirements, we did look at, um, which is section D, we looked at, um, some similar uses in the conditional use permit section and, um, came up with the recommendation that we need to provide a distance with a thousand feet of the Greenbelt Conservation District. Um, and also not have these within a five mile radius of each other. Next slide, please. Um, section E talks about unreasonable dust, um, and how that will impact neighboring properties, and then section F builds on that, requiring as part of the conditional use permit application, a dust control plan. Section G requires a certificate of liability insurance for the proposed conditional use permit. Next slide. Um, H talks about erosion control and what we, what will be needed on the site to ensure that that is, um, that is met. Section I is, uh, how solid and hazardous waste is disposed on property. And then section J, um, requires a nine-one, nine-one-one address for the conditional use permit. Next slide, please. Um, K establishes hours of operations. Um, and then L talks about sanitary facilities, um, working in conjunction with the Environmental Health Department for the conditional use permit application. Um, M looks at the nuisance factors such as the appearance, emission of odor, gas, dust, smoke, noise, or other nuisance factors, um, that they should not be detectable at the property lines. Next slide, please. And then N establishes some screening requirements. I know there's a lot of language on this slide, but um, in essence, we took what was already in our code of ordinances regarding junk and salvage yards as a conditional use permit and brought that forward to this proposed conditional use permit as well. So these are not necessarily new regulations. Um, they would just be new supplemental standards for this particular conditional use permit. Next slide. Um, O, um, really talks about confining the, the, um, repair and service garage to an envelope that's established on the property, again, keeping in mind that um, it may be in conjunction with another use on the property. Um, P just clarifies that the use submitting, must submit a commercial site plan. Um, that would be acted on in accordance with Chapter 88. And then, um, Q establishes a minimum of two acres if it is in conjunction with another use on the property, again, keeping the idea of buffering and separation of uses in mind. Next slide, please. R addresses, um, access from a shared driveway, uh, making sure we're have enough of a easement width in order to accom- accommodate, um, different types of uses entering and exiting the property. And then S talks about, um, traffic generation and requiring if it's a 50% increase to any average daily traffic counts, um, you may have to rezone a property to commercial light industrial. Then next slide, please. Um, the other part of the proposed revisions is to revise the table of conditional uses, Table 90, um, down, dash, one, and that would be adding semi tractor, trailer, and RV repair and service garages to only the A-1 district as a, as a conditional use permit, subject to the supplemental standards that I just ran through. Next slide. Um, so as the board knows, all text amendments must look at, uh, we, we go through the standards for approval as outlined in Section 92.07, subsection two of the Code of Ordinances. And that is specifically looking at conformance with our cornerstone to capstone C2C plan, and then, um, conformance to the scope and purpose of the ordinance. Uh, staff did outline in the staff report, um, both the applicant's, um, comments regarding this analysis, and then staff did find that the proposed amendments conform to both A and B as no doubt on the slide. Next slide. Uh, legal notice, notices were published in the three official newspapers on September 26th regarding the public hearing for the Planning and Zoning Commission, as well as today's meeting of the Board of Supervisors. Um, as of today, um, no public comments have been received. Um, and then I do want to again revisit the October 2nd, 2024 recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Uh, they recommended approval of vote of five to zero on the text amendment to sections, uh, sections of Chapter 85, general provisions and definitions, and Chapter 90, conditional uses. Um, with the modification add semi to the title and other relevant sections of the proposed regulations. Um, the comment that was made was semi-tractors or semi-trucks, um, are similar in nature to type of use, and it, um, it would be helpful to add the, that language to the title, clarify that they would be allowed as well through these repair garages. So based on, um, these points and the analysis background, standards for approval, um, planning and development staff does recommend that the board approve ordinance number 319 on first consideration. As modified and presented by staff and further modified by the Planning and Zoning Commission, you set second consideration for Tuesday, October 15th. Your alternatives are on the next slide. And that is alternative number two, and I can go through the four alternatives if you'd like me to, or just answering questions you may have.
Leanne, this is Linda. I do have some questions.
Sure.
Um, and I'm sorry, I didn't get a chance. I just looked at this briefly. I did not get a chance to look at it in the context of the zoning ordinance. But I was, I, I, so I have a few questions that I'm sure you'll be able to resolve and that I, I would have been able to answer if I'd looked at it. But let me ask, you've got under B was residential envelope. Is that saying the res, that this conditional use is on a property with a residence, like a home business?
No.
No. Explain that.
Um, what that is saying is that this might be in conjunction. This, this type of use might be occurring in accessory building on a property where there's already residential use, or a residential use could be built on a property that has this conditional use permit established already. So we want to make sure we have enough of an acreage to find for that residential envelope, that residential use, so that they can cohabitat on the same, same property.
But it does not need to have a residential use. It's not a home business.
Correct.
Anyway, okay. Secondly, um, C, the area to be confined for the repairs and service garage shall not exceed five acres. Is that saying the building can be five acres?
The building and the parking area and, um, any outside storage or location of equipment that's needed for the use, that should be limited to five acre, five acre piece of ground.
Okay, but there's no setbacks in any way. I mean, it could theoretically be a five acre building.
Um.
It could be close.
It could be a five acre building. Um, it does need to meet the 50-foot setback that we require of all conditional use permits.
So five acres less a 50-foot setback. That's still a huge, that still would allow a huge building. That takes a lot of ag land out of production, and that's a huge building to have out in an agricultural area. Um, that's just my, that's just my reaction to that. Second, um, just a question. You said the application for solid and hazardous waste removal would be routed to emergency management agency. Did you check with the EMA staff on that, what their role would be? It, it doesn't seem like something that normally fits under their purview to, I'm, I just didn't understand that.
Yeah, we did route the proposed language through, um, our normal interagency review team, and I'll have to get back and look and see what EMA's comments were. I don't really remember what they were, but I can follow up before second consideration, let you know.
I wonder if it may be more appropriate to be environmental health. That has a reg, I mean, they have a regulatory kind of thing. I don't see emergency management as regulatory. I just.
I, yeah, I, I. We can follow up. I think just given the nature of hazardous waste and anything that may be, um, related to that, that's why we want emergency management involved.
Yeah, I, I, I don't see it, but yeah, I would appreciate it if you would check on that. Okay, those are, those are, I think, my concerns. I'm particularly concerned about this kind of size of a, an operation. I've, I've seen just way too many large buildings that have gone into agricultural areas, taken, you know, changing the nature of the rural area and also taking a lot of land out of production. So I have some concerns about this.
Leanne, this is Lisa. I have a question. I'm just wondering by adding semi, semi-truck, whatever to it, um, any discussion with Darren on impact on our roads by adding that as well?
Um, we have not had that discussion. I can before second consideration. I think we have some similar weight already with RVs and trailers.
Okay. That was my question.
I will follow up with Darren.
Leanne, this is Latifah. Um, I do have a couple of questions also. Um, for O, the confinement of repair and service garage, um, no use, she'll be permitted with in any required yard or envelope, and no portion of the front yard, um, she'll be used for the conduct of business. Does this mean like even a sign for the business that might happen to be on the property?
No, I think a sign would fall under our sign regulations, and we would permit a sign if it met our regulations and size restrictions.
Okay. And then the screening, the screening requirements? It's, I guess I just want to make sure we're not setting up additional, um, costs for someone who's trying to start a business. What is, what's the reason for the screening requirements?
Um, it goes back to making sure we have the appropriate separation of uses and limiting the impacts on neighboring properties.
Okay.
That falls, that's the whole idea of a conditional use permit to, to make sure the, that the use is appropriate to the surrounding environment.
Okay. Thanks. That, those were my two questions.
Any other questions before I open the public hearing? Okay. Uh, I'll open the public hearing. If anyone would like to make comment, please come forward. Um, state your name and the comments that you have, or if you're on Zoom, please raise your hand and we will call on you. Would anyone like to make public comment? Just come on up. State your name and address, please, and.
Uh, good morning. My name's Ian Freeman with Camper Commander. Uh, and, um, I was hoping you'd call on me before you closed the, I wasn't sure if I was supposed to get up or not. Um, thank you for your time. Uh, thanks to Ms. Leanne and her staff for, uh, putting this together for us and working with us. I want to be here for questions for you guys. The couple of the things that, that I noticed, uh, what, what we've tried to, and I explained this in the zoning, uh, board. What we tried to do was, we took the supplemental standards that have already been approved. So as far as my, as I've seen it multiple times and we prepared it, the supplemental standards that we proposed and that staff has, um, you know, again, proposed, they looked at it and proposed again. Those are already things that have already been approved by the Board of Supervisors. So we just added those to our request, and so everything that's there has already been approved, as far as I'm, I'm understanding it. So, uh, Ms. Merkin, to your, uh, concerns, I think a lot of those, when, when you look at it as a whole, um, a lot of the, again, those standards, like, one of them is for, I think, the five acre, uh, supplemental standard was from junkyards and landfills. So that's already on the books and approved for, for agricultural area. Another thing that I noticed also that helps maybe with, with that concern, which is reasonable, is that, uh, you can only use five acres that are under a certain lease score. So that if you saw that asterisk, it has to score, uh, low enough, uh, as I understand that scoring, so it can't take good, uh, agricultural ground. Um, and then also, um, I, I appreciate your concern about the screening because they asked me, they said, uh, the board asked me, they said, how do you feel about this, uh, what staff has, has requested, um, and supported? Screening was my, was my concern. Looking down the road, if that gets out of hand, and you have to build a, you know, a a large, uh, structure to screen the business, I think it would be cost prohibitive to some folks that are trying to do business in the, so thank you for mentioning that. And then also, I think, um, a building that would be five acres in size, first off, I don't think it could be five acres because of the envelope, and also some of the screening requirements. Uh, I would need to look at that again, but I think those would, would squeeze the building down. You'd have no room for parking or any easements. And then also, um, I'm, I, as a business person, I'm actually trying to think about what kind of business could bring in the kind of revenue that could support a building. I'm, I, as a business person, I'm actually trying to think about what kind of business could bring in the kind of revenue that could support a building, building of that size. But that would be a huge building and it would have, I mean, it'd be gigantic. Um. A five acre building would be, uh, you know, the expenses on that would be, would be huge. So I'm not sure what type of business that could be in the area and this type of business is being presented. Um. I think another thing is maybe uh. You know, um, again, these have already been approved, so I would hate to add anything to it. But a simple fix would be, you know, requiring the, the building itself not to be, you know, five acres in size. For our business, it wouldn't work, Ms. Mergan, just because we'd need room for, for our inventory and to park things and stuff.
I know you were here um. Before with us. Can you kind of remind us of where your business is now and what the issue is that led you towards making these, this request?
Yes, ma'am. Um, so the uh, we are about a mile out south of um. A mile south of Collins, Iowa, and we're um, about. Uh, uh, what, a half a mile, three, three turns, three right turns from Highway sixty-five. So we're on about uh, three quarters of gravel. And um, the reason that we got here was because we don't qualify to, to rezone. Um, the board, um, and also the zoning board. Did not recommend that we should be rezoned to light and industrial. So um, you know, as we've had the opportunity to, to go through this. What we found is that there are other businesses. Um, this is something that I, thank you for that question, by the way. Um, something that. You know, you get, you get familiar with the, with the law when you need to, and. I'd like to read off some of the things that have already been approved in the, in the county. Some of the other businesses. And their supplemental standards. There's a whole table. As Ms. Leanne pointed to.
Hmm.
Okay, so some of the, some of the. Types of businesses that have already been approved and what we've pulled from, from the standards are private non-commercial aircraft landing fields. Golf courses, except miniature golf courses or, or practice driving ranges operated for commercial purposes. Campgrounds not operated for profit. Nurseries and greenhouses, including retail sales. Drag strips, go kart tracks, courses and or activity areas for motorcycles, mini bikes, snowmobiles and ATVs. Provided that the minimum lot area is twenty acres. So that one's already been approved right there for twenty acres in size.
What was that one?
Uh, this is, is for uh, drag strips. If you ever want to drag strip by your house, you can get this one. Go kart tracks, might be fun. Uh, motorcycles. Mini bikes, snowmobiles and ATVs. Um. That one would be, that would be, uh, that would be a loud one. Uh, commercial campgrounds and travel trailer parks for, um, and that one is for apparently commercial use for profit, doesn't have that, that caveat. Uh, also that's been approved is ready mixed concrete plants, asphalt paving mixture plants. Small ancillary products manufactured by the plant operators. Utilizing excess materials in conjunction with adjacent to a mineral extraction and primary mineral processing operation. But it, it points towards a even extracting minerals out of the ground. Um. Rural salvage yards and can, and I'm just reading a few. Rural salvage yards in conjunctions with an owner occupied single family dwelling. Bed and breakfast. Uh, construction and demolition landfills. And uh. You could also, what's been approved is adult bookstores and adult establishments. Yard waste and composting facilities. So there's a, there's quite a few, and that's just. You know, thirty percent or so. Um, there's other ones. And so again, we've pulled from the standards. That allow these operations to be approved and we've put them in our proposal. And Ms. Leanne and her staff recommended for approval and then we had a unanimous decision by the, by the zoning board. Thank you for that question.
Certainly. I do appreciate that. I do also note that a lot of those, um, the, the. Those uses are either things that simply are not going to, for some reason, be in city limits or are open air or maybe are temporary. Um, I was just reacting honestly to the fact of like a potentially a five acre building, uh, you know, that. That does not seem like a small, a small industrial operation manufacturing. It seems rather large to me. And when we're doing this, we're opening it up to something that could be close to a five acre building. That's my concern. I don't know if you know how big your building is going to be in acreage. Um, something comparable.
Yeah, it's not even, uh, I mean, what's an acre? Um, we're seventy by uh. Seventy by. I think it's a hundred foot, right under a hundred foot, eighty-five. I think it's seventy by eighty-five foot, something like, something like that.
And I just, in, in, again, what I'm looking at is I just look at the fact that agricultural land is going to a lot of things in this county right now. A lot of what it's going to is residential development because we don't seem to have as much. Infill as I think might be appropriate to meet our housing needs. So I'm just looking at this, I, in general. It is a conditional use, um, which is better than it being a, you know, a permitted use. I think that the, that means that the county will be looking at anything that comes before this ordinance. Um, I realize that you're, you know, you, where you were, thanks for the reminder, that you didn't have an option there to rezone. Um, but you weren't there, you didn't get zoned before you got there. So it's kind of a cleanup right now.
Yeah, we, we actually, if, if I can remind the board, um, we actually, you know, we had, we didn't know. We were unaware of the, of the zoning requirements and. At the beginning, before the business grew to this size, we probably would have been, uh, in the smaller state that we were at the beginning. We could have fallen underneath other uh, supplemental standards, but now it's just, it's gotten, you know, it's gotten bigger. Uh, this business started in my driveway, you know, and so, um, yeah, we, we've grown. Um, and the way that, the way that we found out about this was we were actually. Trying to get a permit for a sign whenever we found out that we were out of compliance. So that's how, we were trying to be compliant when we found out we were non-compliant.
Well, you're not alone in thinking that because you do something out in the country, that there's no regulation, you can do whatever you want to because you're out in the rural area. You are not alone, unfortunately.
And I, and I, um, you know, I have never been, I've never had an RV business before, so this is all new to me. And another thing I would like to, to point out to your concerns is I think it would be very difficult for a five acre building. To fall, to, to, to live up to or meet the other standards, because we've got a ton of standards that are in there. I think it would be, I think it would be uh, very difficult for a five acre building to meet those standards.
I think growing, um, your business growing out. Of just your driveway is remarkable. I think it really highlights the, the demand and the need for this, those services. Um, I am curious where the five acre came from, because what, what's in my mind is like. Data center or warehouse or that type of thing. Where, Leanne, can you just tell us where the five acres? Came from?
Um, I will admit the five acre predates even me at Story County with the rule in salvage yard.
Okay.
I would assume it, it, just thinking about historically, it was probably. That was the size of a, you could leave a thirty-five acre piece tract. As a, for a house in the A-one district. Um, but I'm, I'm just trying to like throw some things at the wall and see if it sticks of my memory there. Um, what I will say though is like the data center and all that. None of that would fall under this conditional use permit. Those types of uses um, would definitely need a rezoning.
Okay.
Warehouses?
A warehouse, this one, this is specific. For uh, what you're considering right now for the RV storage, the semi truck, trailer and RV. Um, repair garage, service garage. A warehouse would be a conditional light industrial use.
Okay. Thank you.
Good. And I want to thank the applicant for the information and the, and the history.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Any other comments? Questions? All right, if not, I'll close the public hearing. Any further discussion? Their motion?
Move approval.
We need to set second, and set the second consideration for October.
Second consideration for October which? Fifteenth, thank you.
Second. Been moved and seconded, Mergan?
Aye.
Basil?
Aye.
Edens, aye. Next we have discussion and consideration of bid award to Edge Commercial for the county attorney. Beta office remodel for seven hundred and seventy thousand, four hundred dollars.
Good morning, board.
Morning.
Morning.
Again.
Yeah, yeah.
As we're all aware, last Tuesday, we opened some bids for the county attorney remodel.
Talking very quietly.
It's not normal for me.
I know.
So, all right, we'll start over.
Thanks.
All right. As we all know, last week, we opened some bids for the Story County Attorney's Office remodel at the Justice Center. Um. All bids came in good on that project. Um. So we're here today to, me to give my recommendation to. Accept the bid from Edge Commercial and award the project to Edge Commercial. Total, um. Bid for the base bid and alternative one is seven hundred and seventy thousand, four hundred dollars. We did review Edge Commercial. Um. They are a capable and competent bidder for this type of project. Um, Jeff is familiar with, um. A lot of their work. They've done a lot of work with the Des Moines School District. Um. So we reviewed their subcontractors. We're confident that they are capable of handling this level of project. Um, the br- the budget for this project is nine hundred and thirty thousand. If you factor in engineering and design services, we're a total project cost of eight hundred and thirty-eight thousand, so. Ninety-two thousand under budget, so. That's nice to see.
Yes.
We haven't, we haven't seen. One come in this good for a while, so.
Excellent.
If there's any questions, I'd feel free to answer them.
The replacement of the fire alarm system, I'm just asking because I can't remember. Is that just the alarming? Is that the sprinkling?
That is the, um. The alarm system like the horns and scribes, yeah, all the sensors, it's the entire system in the facility, not just. In the area of the county attorney's office, so that would handle the sheriff's office, jail, everything.
But just the electronic portion, not, not the sprinkler.
Yeah, there's nothing wrong with the current sprinkler system. Yes, there'll be some moving of components around to accommodate the. The new room layout, but yes.
Awesome.
Mm-hmm.
Any further questions?
Good news.
That, I'll take, take a motion.
Uh, I would move approval.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, Basil?
Does it need to be more specific? Okay, Basil.
Aye.
Mergan?
Aye, as well.
Edens, aye.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you both.
Thank you. We got there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Next we have uh, departmental reports. We have the engineer's quarterly report.
Good morning.
Morning, Karen.
I'll start out on some maintenance work we have going on. Uh, just start out by saying fall started out really dry. Uh, which does reduce the amount of damage we have to our roads during harvest. That's the good news. The bad news is uh, we get a lot of dust and washboarding. Uh, especially the past week, we're starting to get some complaints about the washboarding. There's only so much we can do with those when it's this dry. The, the more you blade it right now, the worse the washboards will get, so we. Have to be careful on how much we blade them right now. That has a lot to do with the complaint you had uh, this morning, Lisa, about the bike trail. They backfilled. The road portion up against it and the material is just so dry that. It's starting to kind of work its way out, so it's got some bumps, but until we get some moisture, those issues are going to be hard, hard to address, but uh. We'll keep it safe until we get some moisture out there. Uh, some of the DOT projects are starting to wrap up thankfully, such as Highway sixty-nine. Which will reduce the amount of traffic using the gravel roads in the area and the dust complaints. Um, our road crews have been uh, busy focusing on some concrete patching work on E-twenty-three and E-sixty-three down by Huxley. As well as uh, milling. Some pavement bumps throughout the county. Uh, this month, we'll start to prepare equipment for winter. And uh, we are expecting to have our new tandem dump truck finally, that's been on order for two and a half years. Just takes that long to get, fortunately. Moving on to construction, uh, we had eight projects this year. We're getting close to wrapping everything up. The Richland eight box court. Uh, has started and should be wrapped up possibly tomorrow and get that road back open. And then the only thing left to complete would be the Dayton Avenue overlay project. That's just the thin overlay on. Uh, Dayton Avenue, South Riverside that gets all the truck traffic. Uh, we're just kind of doing a thin overlay to smooth that road out. It, it really gets pounded by all the truck traffic out there. But that should start next week or two. Construction project design, uh, the final plans have been submitted for the three hundred and twenty-fifth Maxwell. Uh, dual bridge replacement down there that we got the state grant on. Uh, the DOT letting scheduled for November eleventh and construction will play, take place in twenty twenty-five. Uh, the other major bridge for next year is the hundred and fiftieth street bridge over the Skunk River. Uh, it was found to be not historic, uh, so we decided to move forward with the replacement of that bridge in twenty twenty-five. Uh, the project. Will be let through the DOT in March or April. It keeps getting pushed back due to some environmental clearances we're waiting on. And, which isn't a big deal because the project can't actually start. Until the water is fifty degrees because we have to do a muscle relocation in this area. Um, so once the water is fifty degrees, the consultant comes in and moves the muscles out of the area of construction. Uh, so the contractors cannot start until that work is done anyway. Uh, the federal transportation bill, the main thing we're working on right now is the safety action plan. Uh, we uh, had the meeting on the workshop on September thirtieth. And so now the consultant's finalizing that plan and should be completed with it sometime next spring. After that's completed, we can start applying for some safety improvement projects. The House files seven eighteen implications for our budget. Um. Just quick update on it. The good news is we weren't sure where we were as far as a seventy-five percent minimum goes. The good news. We completed our annual report for FY twenty-four and we were closer to eighty-two percent. I think it was actually closer to eighty-three percent. Uh, but it's far enough above the seventy-five percent minimum that. That gives us a couple more years of leeway before some of those rules get implemented in Story County and could have a big impact on our foreign market account especially, but. Hopefully some laws will change before we get to that level and, but there'll be some other counties that have to deal with it before we do. Uh, DOT construction, the E-sixty-three bridge over I-thirty-five is nearing completion. Uh, but uh, E-sixty-three is still closed. Once that bridge is completed, the DOT is going to jump down to the Highway two-ten bridge and close that most of next year. Uh, when that's getting done, kind of cuts Huxley off the access to I-thirty-five, so they'll have to use Highway sixty-nine. If, they may have a bridge on that as well. Still going next year, so that might be a mess.
Earlier.
Uh, the other big project right now is the five-eightieth interchange. Uh, this dry weather is really uh, increased the amount of work they got done, so they should have that wrapped up. And get it open before winter. Uh, we will take over about three miles of those frontage roads. Uh, was kind of at a whole new snowplow route for us. And I will be having a stop line, stop sign resolution come through the board. I'll probably just put on the consent agenda because they're just stop signs that are already up. We just need to uh, get them legal. Uh, the five-ninetieth Avenue Level B Road south of Highway thirty. Uh, the DOT is planning to permanently close that. Uh. Not real clear on the timing of the closure, but uh, it's pretty evident that will happen for sure. Um, we're looking at what to do with the Level B Road south of there. A lot of that's going to depend on the Jensen farm negotiations with the DOT. I thought those were done, but I double-checked the DOT and they actually put them on hold for quite a while, so they're just restarting negotiations. I thought they were going to purchase the whole farm, but that is not going to happen now. So now they're maybe back to looking at access, maybe on 590th or the farm. Bottom line is we have to wait to see how that negotiation turns out before we can decide what we're going to do. It's going to cut out access to those wind turbines, the one wind turbine and the tower out there. That's the Randy Collings farm. So he's got some attorneys claiming some damages if the DOT does close that access to Highway 30. But right now, we're kind of waiting to see what happens with the DOT. Maple Street Road in Frontald, we've removed the dead ash trees off of Maple and we installed a tile a couple of years ago. So I think we're to the point we can have a hearing this winter to permanently vacate Maple Street and turn the ownership back to the adjacent property owners.
Thanks for getting that done. That just, it's a road to nowhere.
Yep.
Basically. So.
The City of Ames Sewer Line Projects, they have two of them going out into the county, which is kind of a rare thing to put a sewer line before they annex it. One of them's not too big of a deal on the Boone County line, South of Lincoln Way. It's just a road crossing. The bigger issue is going to be it's going to conflict with some drainage district tile. So we're working with the district on that. The one that's going to have a bigger impact is on 550th, South of Ken Merrill, Southeast of Ames. They're going to put that right down the center of the gravel road, so it's going to be a complete reconstruction of our road after they get it put in. I did meet with their consultant yesterday again with some preliminary plans. And I'm going to start putting together a 2080 agreement we'll have with the city to have some assurances for the county, mainly for access to property owners during that construction. It's my biggest concern. Even when we get a rain event, that's when things kind of fall apart and people don't have access. We have to make sure they have a plan in place there. And they still should be holding a public hearing, a hearing, but just a public meeting with the landowners in the area so they know what's going to happen next year. But that's still planned for 2025.
They're all county roads, so we don't need an easement.
No.
They need an easement from us.
It's just us, yeah, allowing them to put, it's like more of like a utility permit situation.
Are they planning to annex?
It's in their growth plan. It's, they've got some federal funds to do this. That's why they're putting it in now. They have a certain amount of money they have, so they don't know how far they're going to go. They're looking at some cost estimates WHK has just put together, so they're going to go as far as they can until the money runs out. It's two or $3 million, I think. That's why they're doing it ahead of time is because they got federal money. So I'll work on that 2080 and bring it to the board soon. Prairie Valley Subdivision, the second phase paving is completed. The turn lane portion, we did delay a bit till the third phase so that we can complete the tile boring project that's going on so they don't conflict with each other. That project is ongoing. They have bored the 36 inch tile through the road and they're just now working on the connections to that 36 inch tile and connecting it to the wetland project just south of there. One thing I didn't have on here I wanted to bring up is the Maxwell Shed. The board was approached about possibly turning that over to the City of Maxwell. IRVM has a couple pieces of equipment in there, yet we were kind of hoping they'd get their building completed out at the county home before we turn that building over. But that's something I'm, we're definitely interested in turning it over. I've found the documents from when we did that in Slater 10 or 15 years ago. So it just requires a hearing and then a resolution by the board. So it's not too big of a deal, but I will start getting those documents ready so we can possibly turn that over. The roof of the building really needs some work, so the city kind of wants it to happen sooner and later so they can get that patched up before it does too much damage on the inside of the building, so. They're not, I think that's all I have today.
Any questions for Darren?
No, I found it really interesting to participate in the seminar, the safety seminar the other day. I was really glad to have been able to be here for that.
I'd say the main thing out of that is there was a lot of minor improvements we could do to a lot of those intersections and stuff that we probably won't be applying for because to apply for a federal aid project, it takes a lot of work and lettings and stuff. Some of those aren't worth that effort. We can take care of them on our own. But so we're kind of looking for the bigger type projects to actually apply for projects next year. So just keep that in mind.
I drove by the Boone Story Eight project the other day and saw that there was a lot going on. It also seemed like they had put in what looked like it might even be a semi-permanent road. They got a lot of gravel in there.
The one that's going back to the wetland?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is that going to be a permanent road there?
You know, that's a good, that's a question for Mike. I approved the driveway. I don't know. Yeah, if it's going to be a rock road permanently. I think that's just for construction access.
Because it's awful close to the intersection to have a drive going out.
And I think eventually the bike path is going to work its way on that same alignment. So I think part of that will turn into the bike path, but the stuff closer to the road in the lower area, I think that'll probably go away.
Okay, good, because it looked really, it was really close to the intersection and we're looking at lots more traffic there anyway if we're putting in a right turn lane. And I thought, how is that going to work? If that's, if that's permanent.
Yeah.
So, okay, I'll double check with Mike.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Darren. Next, any upcoming agenda items? Oh, I'm sorry. No, I'm sorry. Update from Story County Recorders. Regarding Iowa Land Records. I apologize for that.
Like a surprise visit. I might do this quarterly. If that sounds okay, just to kind of let you know what's going on in the recorder's office. So on the agenda, I did list a few of the information that Iowa Land Records has sent the board, their annual report and also a memo from ISAC after our Legislative Policy Committee meeting. And this fee monetization initiative is going forward with the support of ISAC. So that's just kind of information to kind of have at your fingertips. But I wanted to go over just a little bit of what exactly the recorders have been busy doing with our lobbyists and our stakeholders. We spent a lot of time the last whole year surveying our user groups, stakeholders and really tried to come up with a good plan. You know, with our property tax reform, how it's impacted our counties, every single county, and looking at ways that we can possibly generate some more revenue. So that's what the bulk of this fee monetization policy is. But I do want to just kind of hit a few things if you don't mind. I won't take very much of your time. Okay. So like I said, I just feel it's important to go over this with you in a public setting. So if you have any questions or the public is aware of what exactly the meat of this initiative is. So I'm going to read from my notes so I don't miss anything. And I do need Bryce's assistant on this, my second point. So what we're, what we're looking at is modernizing our recording services with an investment in reasonable adjustment in recording user fees. Currently, when we record in our recorder's office, a lot of the burden comes on the taxpayers to keep our office open. So this will be more of a user fee. So if you need to record documents, the user is helping support that recorder office. So that's kind of the way you can, and we're just looking at something that's simple, reasonable and consistent throughout the whole state. So, okay. So recording fees are user fees that are paid to cover the cost of recording a real estate transaction and keeping up with current technology and security needs. And the Iowa recording fees haven't been updated since 1985. Think about 1985. There's Ronald Reagan. He was president in a second term, 40 years. Whitney Houston, Nintendo. I was a sophomore in high school. There's my picture down there. Cherry Coke was introduced. So think back 40 years. Think about all the changes that have happened in 40 years, yet in the recorder's office, the recording fee has been the same, $5 per page. So that's really what we want you to visualize, that it won't be a huge impact for our users, but it will be a huge impact for every county to our general fund. So so what the proposal calls for is recording fees to be increased to a flat $10 per page. Currently, it's five. And then there are some additional fees that come on top of the recording fee. So the overall recording fees would be further simplified and reducing that fee increase for recording. So I talked about these add-ons. If you think about it, $5 per page, and then there's a dollar e-commerce fee and a dollar records management fee. Those would go away. And then on the first page, the $10 fee, it would be a carve-out. So it's a little bit different. It's easier for the user that you, how many pages do you have? Your mortgage is eight pages. It's $80 to record. Instead of trying to do the math, we have a hard time with some of our customers that can't do math. And so this is very simple for them to figure out how to calculate their recording fees. So additionally, the non-standard fee would go away. Sometimes documents come in and they don't meet the recorded requirements, so you can pay an additional $10. That would go away. And the, like I said, the records management and the e-commerce fee would be repealed. The fee is more predictable. And what are we going to benefit from with this recording fee increase? There's a lot, not just within our office. I know Senator Dickey last session was talking about a statewide notification system, like a fraud notification system. We could certainly use some of this money to do that statewide with the help of our Iowa Land Records system. So that goes hand in hand. We would like to see the Back the Blue Bill reviewed and possibly made better for all of our sheriffs, police officers, you know, that was there to protect them so people couldn't find out where they live. Like an, it's similar to the Safe at Home Bill. I don't know if you're familiar with that at all, but Senator Dickey is very, very interested in not only the fraud notification system or some type of notification system, as well as other legislators with the Back the Blue Bill. It's a very, very good idea, but the way that it was implemented really doesn't protect or shield the records from public use. So that would be a way to have more funds to implement that and to look at that, to get that, just a better, a better practice. What else? And all this information, I think, was in, in the information that we provided to you. I just think it's really important that you know, the public knows that we're all trying to use as much of our resources as we can. And by implementing this, this new legislation and having all of our stakeholders on board, we're listening to them, we're having them come to the table and supporting a lot of what we are trying to implement. And we really could use your help if you have any questions. The bottom line is it's going to bring more revenue to Story County. And that's, and it's something that hasn't been changed for 40 years. And technology has changed and a lot of the, the burdens that you see our IT department have, you know, we have to, you know, two-factor authentication, you know, that's not free. So those kinds of things. So I just wanted to bring that up to you, that this is what we've been working on. I'm one of the legislative co-chairs of my association, so we've been really working really hard to get the word out. So I would just encourage, if you have any questions, to let me know or if you happen to talk to, you know, other elected officials or legislators, just keep us in mind. So if you have any questions at all.
Are, are all of the counties, do all of the counties participate in the Iowa Land Records?
Yes.
Now?
Okay. Yeah, it's a 99 county and we have a 2080 agreement. Each county has signed a 2080 agreement with Iowa Land Records. Or it's, the governing board is called ESS. But yeah, that started in 2005, just an idea with a bunch of recorders and a project director. And now we're like first in the nation to have a statewide system like Iowa Land Records. So, so yeah.
Awesome.
Thank you for your time. And if you have any questions, certainly, I'm here. All right. Thank you.
Thanks.
Yep. Moving on, any upcoming agenda items? At this time. Okay. Now's the time for public comment number two, items on, or comments on, from the public on items not on this agenda. The board may not take any action on the comments due to the requirements of open meetings law, but may do so in the future. If anyone would like to make public comment, if you're in the public meeting room, please come forward. Or if you're on Zoom, please raise your hand. Hey, seeing on will close public comment number two, Liaison Assignments Committee Meeting Updates and Announcements. Supervisor Faisley going to start us off?
Sure. I have a Naco Courts and Corrections Subcommittee meeting. I was elected, selected as chair of that subcommittee, so excited to see what we're able to do with that. Thank you. Tomorrow morning, we have flu shots here in the admin building. And then I have a Naco Rural Action Caucus meeting in the afternoon and then Drainage District meeting. Thursday, I have DEIB committee meeting. And Friday, looks like I am open on Friday. Monday, I've got some stuff going on with personal, taking my dad, my dad to the doctor.
Hey, Supervisor Merkin.
Yeah. Tomorrow morning, I'm going to be participating in a Lion Energy Leadership Roundtable over at the Research Park. I was invited to that after I've been talking with Lion about rural broadband needs and whether they were going to be able to give us a match this year. And unfortunately, for the grant, we did, unfortunately, they weren't, but I did get invited to the roundtable to talk about that and to talk about other issues that, that they may be of, may be of interest to them. So I'm looking forward to that. Drainage District meeting in the afternoon and then Women in Leadership, I think, is, I've got on my calendars. That's.
I, yeah, I think so.
I think so.
I am not able to attend that one.
I think I'll be able to attend that. Thursday, another webinar on broadband money, a bead webinar. And evidently, I don't know a whole lot about it, but evidently the feds have accepted the plan that Department of Management put in for use of bead money in Iowa and hope to learn a little bit more about that without having to read 500 pages. If we have to, we'll, we'll read it, I guess. Got some meetings in Ames Thursday afternoon and Friday morning. And then I will not be here next Monday, taking the day off, but I do have Conservation Board in the evening. So that's what my week looks like.
Hey, thank you. I just realized on my calendar, I need to take my son to an eye appointment this afternoon. So I'll leave a little early to pick him up from work and take him to that. I have flu clinic done as well, Drainage District, and I have a Naco Workforce meeting tomorrow afternoon. Thursday, a meeting at Friendship Park. And Monday, which my calendar wrote. I have a personal appointment first thing in the morning and then I'll, I'll be in. I should be in the office by around 10 o'clock. I have a lighter week this, this time. The next, next couple of weeks are getting busy. So if there's nothing else, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Been moved in seconded, Merkin.
Aye.
Basil?
Aye.
Edens aye. We are adjourned. Edens aye. We are adjourned.